Good evening. This is Tuesday, April thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-one, meeting of the Town of Berlin Planning Board. As a preliminary matter, please note that this meeting is being recorded and that some of the attendees are participating by video conference. Accordingly, please be aware that other folks may be able to see you. The ugly band t-shirt you decided to wear tonight, whether you attend to or not, screen share anything on your computer. Anything that you broadcast will be captured and recorded forever and ever, and may possibly wind up as a TikTok or YouTube video to be shared amongst your friends and neighbors. This is Tom Sanford, Chairman of the Planning Board. Permit me to confirm that all the members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me prior to me calling the meeting to order. Planning Board members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Jay Teach.
Here.
Timothy Wheeler.
Here.
Carolyn McDonald.
Here.
And we'll hold on Janet.
Janet is, hold on, give me, I just, I just promoted her, yeah.
Excellent. Wait one second.
Hmm. Into the, into the ethernet, I guess.
Oh, when she pops in, we'll call her name. How's that?
Okay.
Uh, we should have anticipated speakers and we'll, um, we'll call him and record them once they, uh, we elevate them. During the public hearing part of this. With a quorum of the board present, I call this meeting to order at seven thirty-five P M. Tuesday, April thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. This is an open meeting of the Planning Board and it's being conducted remotely consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March twelfth, two thousand and twenty, over a year ago, Holy Smokes. Due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth of Mass due to the outbreak of COVID nineteen virus. Specific information and general guidelines for the remote participation by members of the public can be found on the Town of Berlin website. The governor's order suspends the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location and allows us encourages us to participate remotely. For this meeting, the planning board is convening using the Zoom platform as posted on the agenda, which includes links for the public to join this meeting. Meeting ground rules. I will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After their, their concluding remarks, I will invite each member of the board by name to provide any content. Comments, questions, penetrating insights and or motions. Please hold all of your insights until your name is called. Board members and speakers on the agenda, please remember to mute, mute your phone or your computer when you're not speaking. Speak clearly, unlike what I'm doing, and to ensure accurate minutes are recorded. For any response, please wait until you are yielded the floor. State your name before speaking. If a board member wishes to engage in conversation with another member of the board, please do so through me to avoid multiple conversations at the same time. Lastly, please note that each vote in this meeting will be conducted by a roll call vote. Thank you all for your understanding and cooperation. So, we have, um, some review, mail and pay the bills. Um, I didn't see any bills in the mailbox. We do have some, um, stuff from other towns and other boards, um, from other towns. Uh, I didn't open it yet, but I can't imagine there's anything that's outstanding or crazy or anything else. It's mostly hearing notices and things along those lines. Uh, but I will open it and, um, report to the board if there's something that we need to take action on right of way. Okay, um, is there any timely items or anything that we do? Well, first of all, before we go into timely items, um, is there any procedures that we need to do that's different than what we normally do for a normal meeting for a public hearing on or resume platform? Does anybody know that if we have to do something special?
Not to my knowledge. I mean, I think if Carolyn's managing the raising of the hand, if people want to speak, they'll be allowed in.
Okay.
Um, that's basically, I mean, normally we'd pass around a sheet and record who's here. I suppose we could look at the attendees list and just make note of that in the minutes.
Right. I wonder if that gets recorded.
I just want to make sure that we don't do something that winds up putting us in peril later on by somebody challenging and saying, well, you didn't do it like you're supposed to.
I mean, perhaps Margaret would, would share any insight because she's sitting there in the wings.
Uh.
It looks like Dennis is on the phone.
Yeah.
Yielding now, he's yielding the floor to Janet. One second, Margaret.
What?
Get it here. Hurry up.
Hello? Hello?
Hello.
Hi, Margaret.
Hi, hello everyone. How are you?
I'm good. Thank you.
So as far as the public hearing, I would recommend that you make note of all the attendees in the audience as if they were signing into your hearing. Um, you're also under the new Housing Choice Act. Um, the Planning Board should make clear the quantum vote requirements of all proposed zoning bylaw amendments that the Planning Board will discuss tonight at the hearing. So each one just make clear, everyone is going to be a two thirds, um, two thirds vote. So that should make it easy for everyone. Um, other than that, um, uh, just have all speakers announce who they are and, and again, if you can record the attendees, and I think you should be good to go.
Okay.
Fantastic. Okay, Margaret, how do you, uh, do you think, should we put the attendees to record the attendees? Should they just be in the minutes?
Yes, I would recall, I would put the names of all attendees in the minutes. Yes.
Okay, Jay, can you see that list on the side? You're muted.
List on the side. Let me see.
So if you go down to the bottom, do you see where it says ten participants?
Yeah.
If you click on that, the people that are participants will show up on the right-hand side.
Yep.
Okay. So panelists obviously are us five.
Yep, we'll capture that. We go to a vote on the minutes, by the way, from last time.
In due course, one second.
Okay.
Are we, we pretty much, we understand what we need to do, right? Okay, um, Janet, can I call you, uh, your attendance? So can you acknowledge that you're here?
Do I have to be a hundred percent?
Uh, no. Just have to say here, you're here. Okay, fantastic. So we have a full board. Excellent. Thank you. Okay, so I will entertain a motion to accept the minutes of the meeting from last time.
I'll move that we accept the minutes from March.
Twenty-third.
Twenty-third?
Yep.
March twenty-third.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second on accepting the meetings minutes. Is there any discussion? Okay, seeing none, I will ask you to vote and I have to do it by roll call vote. Jay Teach.
Aye.
Timothy Wheeler.
Aye.
Carolyn McDonald.
Aye.
Janet Campbell.
Yeah. I mean, I.
Tom, Tom Sanford. Aye. Thank you. Uh, the motion carries unanimous. Excellent. Any other housekeeping items that we need to address?
I'll, I'll make a motion that we pay eighty-three dollars and seventy-two cents to either the Telegram and Gazette or Gatehouse Media for the, um, subdivision hearing for Duncan Vaughn. Eighty-three seventy-two.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to pay the Telegram slash Gatehouse, uh, eighty-three seventy-two for the public hearing notice for the, uh, subdivision on Highland. Any further discussion? Nope, hearing none. I'll ask you to vote. Janet Campbell.
Aye.
Carolyn McDonald.
Aye.
Timothy Wheeler.
Aye.
Jay Teach.
Aye.
Tom Sanford, aye. The vote carries unanimous to pay the Telegraph. Thank you.
Oh, God.
Is there, uh, anything? Oh, another member has joined. Associate member has joined.
Minutes.
Midnight.
Midnight.
Midnight, put it in minutes.
I, I'd like to admit to a transgression.
Uh-oh.
This is recorded.
The Community Preservation Act Committee has no money.
Okay.
And I had to run a hearing notice for our public hearing in regard to our budget. And, um, not knowing how to pay for it, I pretended I was, um, from the Planning Board and that the, the article, the, uh, the notice was being put in for the committee on behalf of the committee by the Planning Board. So what will happen is we'll get the bill, but, um, maybe Margaret would like to volunteer to pay for it out of some other source. Or we can, or we can swallow the, the, the forty dollars and pay it ourselves from the Planning Board this one time. Administrative costs will be, funds will be available to the committee, um, after the town meeting, but prior to town meeting. Of course, we could wait and pay the bill after town meeting.
We could do that too. Oh, no, no, no.
No, we can't. No, no, no.
It's gonna push it into another fiscal year and I'll get in all kinds of trouble.
Yeah, and I got yelled at at town meeting once.
Yeah, that's not a great plan.
We wouldn't be able to pay it in July anyway, but anyway.
Right, if you can.
Unless you want to be chair, then you can, yeah, exactly. You can be chair and then you can incur her wrath. Um, I, I don't see that we have a problem with paying forty dollars. Does anybody else disagree strongly? No?
No.
Okay.
Not even weekly.
Not even weekly. Yep. That'll be fine.
Uh, Margaret has her hand up.
Can you please elevate Margaret?
Yep.
Thank you.
I don't, I don't want to take too much of your time, but that sounds reasonable and what can happen after town meeting should the F Y twenty-one, um, C P A budget be approved. We could do a journal entry and, and charge it to the C P A, uh, the C P A budget for F Y twenty-one.
Okay, thank you.
Planning Board's not gonna spend all its money anyway, so.
Shh, come on, we got reduced twice now, so fight for every scrap we get.
Yep, that's right.
Okay, um, you had emailed me, um, something earlier this week, Tim, about an upcoming conference. Can you elaborate a little bit on that? It was for House, yeah, it was from the C M R P C and it was for forty B?
Oh, there's a, um, the C P T C, Citizen Planning Training. There's a series of those and some are gonna be on forty B, I guess. I didn't read it too thoroughly, but, um, yeah, they normally, they had a big conference once a year in March usually, and they don't do that now because of COVID. And then they used to do, um, a monthly meeting here and there, different parts of the state. Judy Barrett would do some, other people would do others on particular planning topics and right now they're doing these virtual sessions and like focus, I guess this next time around is gonna be on forty B. So if people had an interest, I, I think I shared that with everybody.
You did.
So it's there as an opportunity. I, I may have sent out, did I send out a quarterly notice for Central Mass or was that a while back? I guess that was a while back. That was earlier in the month, you know. I'm trying to send those links to people, so.
People, this is an opportunity if anybody's interested in it's, um, it's a Zoom link, so it's not like you have to go anywhere.
Yeah.
I think it's Wednesday, though.
Yeah, like at one-thirty in the afternoon or something. Yeah, my boss might.
Yeah.
Yeah, frown upon that.
Tom will give you a note.
I'll write it.
Excellent, yeah.
It won't mean much, but I'll write it anyways. Okay, is there anything else that, um, we need to chat about or any timely items that we want to bring up?
You have access to the Planning Board's email?
Jay does.
You?
I thought you did. I thought you got the password. We had to get a password. No.
Not recollecting that.
Okay.
I'm in, we're in the process of getting a Planning Board email, I mean, uh, citizens planning, citizens, Community Preservation Act, um, email address. And I was thinking about the fact that the Planning Board has one, but I don't know, was any of us paying any attention to it? And we do say that, um, people can comment on there regarding any of these hearings. So we should probably go and look to see if there's questions or whatever comments, um, following the hearing here, you know.
Tom, Margaret's, um, raising her hand again.
Okay.
You might be wishing I'm not here, but I would, I, 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 um, I'm happy to contact our I T vendor. Um, so whoever wants to be the point person, I can have them set up a password specifically for you. So, uh, just let me know who you want to, uh, connect that with. We may also be able to set up the Planning Board email, um, and have it connected to all of your emails. So whatever you prefer. Wow. Yeah, you, you actually, we actually could do that and have it linked to all your emails. So whatever you prefer, just let me know.
And on that vein, when I talked to, uh, Paul from the Geeks yesterday, he said, I should ask you to grant permission to have, uh, the Community Preservation Act Committee be given a email address.
I will do that.
And I said, I don't know if she'll do it or not.
She may not trust us. I'll do it and I'll connect it to yours, Tim.
That'd be great. I didn't realize that was possible. That makes life a lot easier.
Good. All right, so Tom, just let me know how you want me to set up the Planning Board email.
I think we should set up Jay.
I agree. I moved that we set up Jay.
Lucky Jay, Jay it is. All right, I'll take care of that tomorrow.
So, yeah, try to make it auto forwards, so I don't have to be looking for it all the time, or I could look at it, I suppose, like Tom does before each meeting.
Right, and Conservation has a Gmail. And I used to just log into it every day, every couple of days to check it.
Can you get it like an Amazon account using credentials for that?
Uh, don't know.
Okay, fantastic. So we actually should look at that after the hearing, after a couple of days in case people have commented or sent penetrating insights that they want us to deal with.
Yep.
Okay.
Has anyone got my new email?
No.
No.
Maybe you'd like to, well, email me and I'll get it.
Yeah, please do.
Seven more minutes.
Well, while we have Margaret here, Margaret, do you want to talk about, um, you have, you have a daytime Saturday town meeting and then a Monday evening? And do you would just want to chat with us a little bit about how you see those operating? The, the Saturday is gonna be similar to last June's, I suppose, but how are you gonna operate this, the Monday?
So on, on Saturday, uh, the intent is to tackle as many articles as possible, obviously. Um, the board wants the town meeting to run from one P M. to five P M. Um, of course, it's the moderator's meeting, so, um, he will be the final, um, the final decider on that. So what Barry has suggested, the board actually did say that they would like the wetlands bylaw and the citizen petitions to both be addressed on, on the Monday evening, May seventeenth. Um, at, the session starts at six-thirty P M. Barry has said if any other articles are still lingering from the Saturday A T M, uh, session, then those would be taken up after the wetlands bylaw and the citizen petition articles, and that would close out town meeting. So our hope now is that we have okay weather.
So, it, without, without question, you wouldn't entertain the wetlands bylaw or the citizens petition on Saturday.
As it stands right now, that's correct.
And, and so.
It's published.
The, the Planning Board articles are at the end of the roster for the Saturday afternoon.
That would be correct. If they're not taken out of order on Saturday, they would be, they would finish up Saturday afternoon if, um, if time allows, yes.
Okay, and if.
Why are those two being moved to Monday?
And if they're moved to Monday, they're at the end of the, the agenda.
That's correct.
Okay.
Um, the wetlands bylaw and the citizen petitions, I think that the moderator felt and the select board felt that they would draw enough attendance that it could um, impact our ability to use the new, um, we have new handheld voting devices. We only have three hundred of them. And I think there, there was a bit of a concern that if we had a larger crowd than that, we'd have to, um, I don't want to say revert, go back to the usual way of voting at town meetings. So they wanted to try to, uh, break those out because of the potential level of interest. So they moved them to Monday.
And, and the Monday meeting will be where?
Same place. It'd be outside the, outside Berlin Memorial School, just like Saturday.
Same place as it was last year?
Same exact place as it was last year.
Monday night, are they bringing bug spray?
Well, yes, we actually, last year, we, um, we had the mosquito control spray for mosquitoes and we're doing that again this year. And we'll, we'll, we'll suggest that people bring their bug repellent too.
Wasn't too bad last year for bugs.
No.
It wasn't.
No.
Right. What are the rain contingencies?
Um, there is another, there's another session already scheduled if needed for Tuesday evening. And then if there's still rain, um, the moderator would set the next, the next date in, in consultation with the board.
And what time do we start on Monday?
Six-thirty P M.
Oh. That's really.
Yep, six-thirty P M. We're gonna have, um, actually, the town meeting, planning and logistics work group is meeting tomorrow to talk about, uh, setup and, and everything, uh, but we'll have the portable light systems and the sound systems and, um, everything we had last year. Excuse me?
Hot dogs.
Oh, no, maybe.
At six-thirty.
That's right. Hot dogs, popcorn.
Yeah.
What about us vegetarians?
Cotton candy.
I hope I've answered your questions.
Oh, that's helpful. That gives us an idea. Good.
That'd be interesting anyways.
Mm-hmm.
Quiet those peepers, don't we?
I know.
Hey, Margaret, have you thought about inviting food truck?
Excuse me, Jay, can you repeat that?
Has there been any, any discussion of inviting a food truck?
I thought you said that. But what a great idea.
That would be good.
I should look into that.
The guy who would do it, he likes horse shows.
Yeah, let's think about that.
You get a guy, Jake?
Yep. It's not exactly health food, but everybody eats it.
Um. Okay.
Oh, Ron's here. Oh, good.
Yep.
How can you tell it?
I'm looking at the attendees list.
Yep.
I don't have that.
Janet, if you move your mouse along the bottom of the screen, a whole bunch of things come up and it says participants is one of them. And if you click, if you click on that, the list of panelists and the list of attendees comes up.
Participants?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, it's eight o'clock by my computer, so we will open the hearing, um, for the zoning articles, uh, for, that we're going to put on for the annual town meeting. Um, their zoning, uh, article, not all zoning articles, but articles one through eight, as we know them, they're gonna be numbered differently for the A T M, but for now we'll take them as one through eight. So, um, the first one will be to see if the town will amend the zoning bylaw, section five forty, home-based contracting business by adding a new five forty point one zero. Businesses must be owned and operated by a resident of the dwelling. Is there any discussion amongst the board members to this? These are basically what we were going to put on last, um, spring. And then what we were going to put on, uh, in the fall when it was canceled and here we're at, at it again. So we've seen this stuff a couple of times. Without any evident discussion or looking to discuss, is there anybody in the audience that have raised their hand? Or wishes to talk about this?
Nobody seems to be.
Seems to be having agenda over this. Okay. So we will carry on. The next article that we are proposing is to see if the town will amend the zoning bylaw, section five four one, table of home-based contracting businesses by adding as registered with the R M V after every instance where G V W appears. Is there any questions or discussion amongst the board members?
Is there a reason we're abbreviating gross vehicle weight instead of?
Probably for brevity.
Okay.
In the article. And that's how the, uh, the registry would, would recognize it anyways as G V W.
Sure.
Anybody else? No? Is there any somebody, anybody that has a hand raised in the audience or anything, have anything about this they want to discuss? No?
No.
Okay, we will forge on. Number three to. Number three, to see if the town will amend the zoning by law, 510, in-law apartments, 512, maximum size by adding, including any proposed addition or modification after the total floor area. Any? No? No board members, anybody in the audience that has a hand raised?
Ron has raised his hand.
Okay, can you please elevate Ron? Ron, you're muted.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm testing it out. I don't have anything to say about this article. Just wanna test, I just wanna test this mute out. I don't have a video. What happened to that?
You don't have a video? Oh, that's unfortunate.
Oh, you can't see me? Oh, well, I'll have to be staying in the background.
Well, I'm glad you're here.
That, that's all, all I did was wanted to test out the, the speaker.
Okay. Okay. Seeing no other penetrating insight or comment, we'll forge on. Number four, to see if the town will vote to amend the zoning by law, section 710, common drives, driveways by adding a new section, 716.8. Any change or structural addition or modification beyond the general maintenance in the location with length, height or material composition of a common driveway affecting its ability or accessibility by users or emergency vehicles or redirecting water runoff must be approved by the Berlin Planning Board. If at the discretion of the planning board, it is determined that the modification is substantial, a public hearing will be required. Any board members have any penetrating insight, questions or comments?
Would the board then have the ability to approve or disapprove the modification?
If it's substantial and we go to a public hearing and at the conclusion of the public hearing, we vote that it is either yes or no, yes, the planning board would have the discretion on, we, we control the, um, the drive, the common driveway process, so we would control this process as well.
So if it was deemed to be substantial, we could make it, we could require them to undo it?
That's correct. Well, they, we would hope that if it was a, a substantial change, that they would come to the board before they went and did it.
Sure. Yeah.
If not, then the board has the ability to say, this is a material change and we need you to come before us and have a public hearing for it.
Got it. Thank you.
Is there any questions amongst the audience?
No hands raised?
Hands raised, no objections? Okay, we'll soldier on. Number five, to see if the town will vote to amend the zoning by law, section 585.4, medical marijuana and adult-use marijuana establishments by adding a new section, 585.4, comma, six, no more than two retail marijuana establishments shall be permitted at any given time. Any comments?
Um, I just have a question. So the number of establishments is based on the number of liquor licenses by the, by the state formula. So by doing this, does that, it, let's say, you know, the liquor license in town, liquor licenses in town double? It will still, so ba- basically, we're saying that formula doesn't pertain anymore? Is that true?
I don't, I don't know. First of all, there's a fundamental problem with this as it is, because the number of liquor stores, we have a, a fraction, so we're actually over the two. So we will probably get challenged on this. Now, if that's the case, I think that we have grounds to say, I think it comes out to round it up to three establishments. And we should be able to make that modification on town floor because the, it's less restrictive than if we went the opposite way and made it more restrictive.
Right.
Uh, when we did the calculation, we were closer to two than we were to three, so we kinda went with that. And that was been, we carried that from last year through till now, so we didn't make any modifications. Is that, is my understanding sound or is that out to lunch?
I seem to remember that, yeah.
Okay.
Um, but I'm just curious if over time, so this, this works for current, the current amount of liquor licenses we have in town. But if, let's say something happens over at the mall and it becomes a haven of different bars or something, like whatever reason that the liquor licenses, you know, um, become more in town, how, how does this stand?
But it is like a license. It's a different kind of liquor license. It doesn't include restaurants.
Uh, I thought it was just the liquor licenses.
Right.
So the number of liquor licenses.
Fail.
So if there's, you know, i- i- the formulation, so if the number was granted and went in, increased, then this would follow where it would be, I would suppose we'd have to modify the, the by law to follow.
Right.
But there is a mechanism, somebody would perform, you know, either the planning board or a citizen's petition or something like that would come along and we changed the, the, the number.
Okay, just curious.
It would be housekeeping more than anything.
Right.
Any other board member have anything they wanna talk about this or penetrating insight or question? No? How about anybody, has anybody raised their hand, Carolyn?
Uh, Scott Hawking, select board member has.
Okay, can you elevate him?
Uh, yes, there you go.
Thank you.
Hi.
Hi, Scott.
So if this is just, if this by law is just reflecting what the state laws, why is this by law, why is this change needed?
Well, right now, there's no, um, ceiling on the number. We don't have any, any ceiling on this, right? So if there is no provision in here to, to cap it, then it's, you could have four, five, six people come and say they wanna put in a, in a, in a, uh, a marijuana establishment.
So this is not then related to the number of liquor licenses we have in town, doesn't regulate the number of marijuana licenses we can have?
It's the formulation, so i- it's sort of guidance, so they do the number of liquor licenses and it's a, and it's a percentage of, and that tells you how many that should be allowed. It's more for guidance. I mean, we could make that number six if the planning board decide, or if the town decided. We could make this number whatever we wanted. It just can't be less than the number of liquor licenses, uh, by that denominator.
Okay, thank you.
It's a minute, the state formula is a minimum.
Correct.
Oops, yeah, yeah. Sorry. There we go.
Anybody else? No? Okay, we'll soldier on. Number six, to see if the town will amend the zoning by law, section 320, table of principal use regulations by deleting the current table entry for residential care facilities for not more than six patients and replacing it with the following. Huh. Okay. I don't know what the following is because I don't have it. Can somebody bail me out?
So what it does is it now allows, um, a facility such as that in the limited business zone where in the past, it wasn't a use that was allowed there. So we allow larger facilities in the limited business zone that are care facilities like this. But we said to ourselves, why are we saying if you can have a larger one, you can't have a small one? So essentially, the, the table now will allow.
So it's the table that changes?
Yep.
It's not the language. Okay. All right. So there, there is a table here and it doesn't, I'm not gonna read it because unless you have it in front of you, it's not gonna make any sense.
Yeah, we eliminated the old table and
Okay.
the new one.
Okay. Any board member have a question or comment? No? Okay, anybody in the audience have raised their hand?
See no hands raised.
We have a dog that wants to make a comment.
Yeah.
Miles Davis.
Miles Davis would like to make a comment?
Oh, um, actually, we do have a hand.
One second, Jay made a comment. You're muted, Jay. Do you wanna make your comment or are you all set? You're all set? Okay. Can you elevate that person, please?
I can. If if you could state your name.
Hi, I'm Genevi Pacheco. I am so, and, um, a Berlin resident and working on Dunkin'.
Okay.
So, um, honestly, this is my first time meeting and, uh, so I'm kinda nervous. I'm sorry.
No problem at all. What's your question?
Um, about the, the, the business we were talking about earlier, if you could expand that driveway or drive something.
Oh, the drive, the, the common driveway?
Yeah, um, I think it is better if the, the Dunkin' in Berlin in a 64 River Road West, if they have a drive-through, so it could be safer for the customers, so they don't have to come in inside of the store.
Okay.
So that'll be the next.
That's the, the, um, the next one we're going to deal with, right? Yeah. So can you just hold your comment for one second until I read that next one into the record?
Yes, sir. Thank you, sir.
No problem. Thank you.
Just in regard to the one we just finished.
Yeah, let's finish that one first.
So the, the old table, didn't allow residential care facilities for not more than six in the limited business zone, and now it does. And in the past, we allowed residential care facilities in the residential agricultural zone and the multifamily district zone with just site plan approval. I mean, with just a special permit. And, and site plan approval wasn't required, and now we're changing it, so you have to have a special permit and site plan approval in any of those districts. So it's just making it similar to, well, residential care facilities on the larger number over 100 are only allowed in the limited business zone, so this is gonna allow for less than six in the limited business zone and require a a site plan approval for, uh, residential agricultural zones and the multifamily dwelling zone. So it gives a little more control and a little more latitude.
Okay.
That's it for that one.
I mean, it makes sense.
Yeah.
Is there any additional comments to this or we pretty much set with this?
Uh, Ron just raised his hand.
Okay.
Yeah, that's Tim's explanation. It's that, do we have something between six and 100? One, if you do more than 100 or less than six, did you leave something out there? It doesn't seem to make sense here.
For not more than 100.
Not more than 100.
So from six to 100
Okay.
is what you're allowed in the limited business zone. Not more than 100. It just says.
That wouldn't, that wouldn't include less than six then?
Not less than six.
Well, that's in the limited business zone.
Okay.
So less than six can be anywhere now. And the, not more than 100 can be, so essentially between six and 100 can be allowed in the limited business zone.
Okay.
Okay.
Clear now. Thank you.
Yeah, but the, it's only limited business that that applies to. You couldn't put 100 in a residential agricultural. Okay.
Or, or six to 100, yeah.
Or six to 100, yep, okay. Okay. Just wanna make sure we didn't change it to something.
Door.
Exactly. Close one door, open the other one. Okay. Any other comments? Be pretty good. Okay, moving on. Number seven, to see if the town will vote to amend zoning by law article fi- 454.2 by replacing the last sentence with the following. A mixed-use village may include drive-up facilities for banks, pharmacies and other retail and service uses and for a maximum of two food establishments. Any comments by any of the board members first? So this is part of the citizen's petition? Okay, so the language here is what was circulated and signed for as far as we know? Okay.
Uh, Chris Senney has his hand up.
One second.
Yep.
Is there any other comments by any of the board members? No? Okay, can you elevate Chris, please?
Okay, Chris, you're good.
Uh, good evening. Hello, everyone.
Hi, Chris.
I was involved in drafting this citizen's petition and then my brother Matt uh, collected signatures of folks in town who wanted to put this on the May town meeting warrant. I represent River Bridge North, the developer of the River Bridge Village. We're looking to see if the voters would allow uh, up to two food-related drive-up windows. The only part of the, uh, the sentence that Tom just read that's changing is the very last phrase after the comma, and for a maximum of two food establishments. Already in our mixed-use village, we are allowed to have drive-up windows for banks, pharmacies and other retail and service uses. Uh, but we would like the voters to consider allowing up to two food-related drive-up windows. We would, uh, put one of those at the gas station where we have, uh, the Dunkin' Donuts facility and we would put the other one at the cafe. And I do have two uh, site plan renderings that I could share with the public just so they could get an image of what these would look like. We're not in site plan review, that would come later and only if the town meeting voters approved this article. Uh, but if, if the board thinks it might be helpful to the public to just see what we're talking about here, I would be happy to share actually, three slides with the board.
Um, is there any questions that anybody have to Chris prior to this, prior to, okay, pretty good. Go ahead.
I just, uh, how different are the plans from the prior attempts?
They're not different, and your board has seen these and the town meeting has seen the one for Noria and Dunkin' Donuts. And perhaps also the one for the cafe. So nothing is really different here. And again, we're not in site plan review. We're just bringing this back to the voters to see if conditions might be right for voters to to authorize the planning board to approve in site plan review these two drive-up windows.
So can I ask a question? This is a general to everybody. If we do this and we're putting this in under four five four point two, which is under a mixed-use village, it's an overlay. But that's overlay is supposed to be able to be used anywhere else in town, right? Are we technically spot zoning something?
Yeah.
I think an overlay is a is a unique type of beast and that we we did include when you think about it, other uses like the CCRC, for instance.
Okay.
That would only be allowed in in this particular zone. So I I don't think it could get challenged as a spot zoning issue. Now, Chris may want to chime in on that, but that's my sense based on the fact that, I mean, it's an overlay, which really is a special type of product. Do I look at it?
Is each overlay unique to the project?
Yep.
That's what I got. Yeah.
I mean, there's very, very specialized language in each of these overlays and I mean, starting with Solomon Pond and Highland Con- I mean, each one of those has language that allows some uses in it that wouldn't be provided for in zoning in any other part of town.
Okay. I understand now. Is there any other comments from any of the board members? Is there any other comments from anybody that have their hand up, Carolyn?
And so Ron has this, well, maybe.
Yeah. I'm here. Did you recognize?
Uh, well, I, Tom, did you want to recognize the woman that you had asked to hold off on first?
Yes, please. First, um, I I see it as Glenn, but I don't know if that's accurate.
No.
Okay. So can you, um, can you remake your comment that you made before, please?
About the drive-up at in the Berlin Dunkin?
Hi.
There you go.
Um, I think it's it's better to have a drive-through on Dunkin' because especially right now, we have this COVID virus and it's better to be like we can accommodate more customers through the window, so we they don't have to come in in the store.
Okay.
It will be safer for them and for everyone.
Okay.
She is citizen?
Yes.
I don't mean of the US.
No, she said she was a Berlin resident.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Does anybody have any comments? No. Okay, thank you for your insight. Ron, do you have a comment that you would like to make?
Yes, just it looks like a type of graphical graphical problem here. Because in the middle of four fifty, four fifty four two, it says, uh, serving food but excluding fast food restaurants. And down the end, now you're adding drive-throughs. So there's a conflict. One says you can't do it, the other other part, it says you can do it.
Well, it says the last part of it says fast, it doesn't say fast food. It just says food establishments.
Well, the part you're putting in.
Correct.
Okay, but the, in the middle of four fifty four two, it says restaurants and other establishments serving food but excluding fast food restaurants. And fast food restaurants are drive-throughs. So therefore, the beginning of it says you can't have drive-throughs. And now you're saying you can have drive-throughs. It it just means taking out the parthenical statement that says both schooling, fast food restaurants and everything would be.
But then that opens the door to fast food restaurants.
Right.
Well, that's that's what this is.
You're muted, Tim.
It 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 deletes that sentence, Ron, and then adds this sentence. So the the part about but not fast food restaurants is eliminated when we replace that whole section. So it says replacing the last sentence. And so but not for fast, not for food establishments gets eliminated by that clause about replacing the last sentence, and then we replace it with the new sentence, which has everything in the last sentence except for the fact that it gets rid of but not for food establishments and adds.
I'm, yeah, what I'm looking at is three sentences up on the top of the page. Well, it's my copy. It's on the top of the page.
You're reading the last sentence in four fifty four point two.
No, I'm not. I'm reading the the fourth or fifth, right in the middle of it. And it says hotels, restaurants, and other establishments serving foods, and there's a parentheses, but excluding fast
Food restaurants.
Yeah, good point.
Tom, when you're ready, there is a new hand raised.
Are you done capitulating about that, Tim?
Well, I'd like to hear Chris's thought about that.
Okay, before Chris, is there anybody else that has their hand raised that wants to make a comment, Carolyn?
Yep, Joseph Murray.
Okay. Can you elevate Joe, please?
Yep. He needs to unmute. There you go.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, Joe.
How are you? Thanks so much. Thanks. Thanks for giving me a moment to talk. Um, we've met several times over the last few years regarding this situation. And we do appreciate your taking this into consideration again. The point was made earlier about COVID situation. And we have experienced a pretty difficult year where you know, masking and everything else that occurs inside of retail outlets has become difficult and sometimes awkward for customers as as well as the employees. And one of the things that we've noticed in stores that we have drive-throughs is that people don't come in the building and we have a little separation because the transaction does take place outside of the building in open air essentially. So that that's presented another reason why, um, you know, this is kind of near and dear to us in this situation for our customers as well as our employee safety. Um, but with that being said, we also fully recognize that we need to come back at some point and discuss and seek approval of what the plan could be that would be acceptable to the planning board. And we we completely recognize that. I want to reemphasize that over the last few years that we've always reemphasized that we know we have to come and sit before the planning board to look at the approval. I think we're just asking the residents for consideration um, to at least review the zoning part of it, because without that part, we can't take the next step.
Correct.
Thank you for your time.
Yep, no problem.
Ron has his hand up again.
Okay, Ron? You're muted.
No, I I meant to lower my hand. Sorry.
Okay, no, no problem.
So I think Ron is, Ron has got a point here, which I'd like Chris to try to address. We've we've got a line where we're we're eliminating but not for food establishments and adding for a maximum of two food establishments. But earlier in the paragraph, we've got restaurants and other establishments serving food but excluding fast food restaurants, which would mean that language would remain intact I, from what I'm reading. And if I look at the definition of fast food restaurant, it's a restaurant which specializes in the preparation of food from a limited menu using throwaway food packaging and with a drive-through ordering and pickup window. So
Created a conflict.
How, what do you think, Chris?
Ron's made a good point. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I think I missed it.
Yeah.
When I, when I prepared the warrant article, I see what you mean. I think we had intended in originally drafting the overlay zone to exclude restaurants that one typically thinks of as a fast food restaurant. But both the cafe and Dunkin' Donuts serve food. And I I just checked the definition of fast food restaurants too in the in the bylaws. So I think this is an inconsistency. I don't know if it's one that can be cured by a modification on town meeting floor. That would be a question for the town moderator. But that's really my mistake.
We get into the we get into the complexity of citizens petitions. So I guess you're right. We we'd have to chase downtown council and ask if indeed a modification on the floor could be could be made. Good catch, Ron.
Yeah. I think I think it's an error on my part.
But it's good to catch it tonight, not, uh.
Oh, God, a town floor.
Yep. The alumnus.
Exactly. Bail this out again. All right, so the pathway forward is that um, we're going to reach out to town council and see what our options are.
Yeah.
I I think it would be both town council and town moderator because the moderator is the one who would who would make the call on a motion from the floor to amend the amend the recommended change to the bylaw.
Okay.
I'm happy to write to the town moderator unless the board would prefer to do that directly.
Given that it's a citizens petition, maybe it's best that you do it.
I'd be glad to.
Yeah, okay. I think we're going to let you do that.
Okay.
And that way, if he has a suggestion that we're not trying to work through us to, you know, it could be directly to you.
Right. All right. Well, thank you very much. I'm sorry. I'm sorry that I overlooked that. Thank you, Ron. That was a very good.
A good catch.
Catch.
Okay, any other discussion or comments on this part of the?
Uh, someone named Mary has raised their hand. Do you want them to identify themselves for the minutes?
Yes, please.
Mary, um, if you could identify your full name?
Sure. We're in eight Highland, Berlin.
Okay.
Yeah, hi, hello, Chris. Could you, could you show the 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 drawing of the drive-through, particularly the one intended at the gas station?
I would be happy to if the board's comfortable with that.
That's fine.
Yeah, thank, yeah, thank you through.
Do I have that option?
We'll have to share yours. We can give him, share the screen, right?
Yeah, so hold on. I need to promote him to a panelist. All right. Chris, you should be good now.
Okay.
And the board and the public see a drawing of our cafe building.
Yes.
Called R six. Here is the the roundabout very close to the cafe. This drawing shows our current facility and the parking. Um, but there's the introduction of a drive-through lane which has two, two lanes. You would place your order here. It would be a bypass lane in case someone needed to leave. And you would pick up your order here. And there are stop signs here, and then you'd make your way back out to the road.
Do you?
I'm having trouble with that drawing. I, it doesn't reflect the parking on the lower part. Um, I don't think is exists, and it doesn't show the the filling station essentially.
Well, I'm across the street at the cafe.
Yeah, cafe, Tim.
Oh, you're doing the cafe.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I I just had this slide first.
I'm, I'm looking at this. I apologize.
No, that's all right. That's all right. I know the question was more about the the gas station. Here's the gas station.
Right.
And so this is the canopy where people pump their gas. Here is the convenience store. The parking in front. Uh, there are three parking spaces near Whitney. And this plan shows the the two lanes that would be built that come around the convenience store. And the 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 menu board would be here, and then you would pick up here. And you may recall that when we were looking at this previously, we talked about perhaps a right turn only out onto Whitney, maybe moving this this opening. Um, so again, we would not get into specific site plan considerations here, but just so that the voters know that that this has been planned. If the voters were to approve this, we would be back before your board. And we would have to go through the full site plan where you might request changes to this. And I, we also had a rendering of the gas station proposal. You can see the two lanes that would come in and go around the building. So this is the concept that we're proposing.
Are you going to stop trucks from packing at that gas station on the end?
There's a lot of particulars that will have to be handled through site plan, so I don't think that we need to get into talking about specifics here because this is just the concept. We will have many, many discussions about where you can put trucks and where the dumpsters are gonna go.
People now, so.
I know, I know. I know. So this is like I, like, like I said, this is just a, like a stake in the ground to start the dialogue. Is that it, Chris?
I'll stop. Yes, that's it. I'll stop sharing now unless someone had any further questions on that.
Was that helpful, Mary?
Um, yes, it was. Thank you very much. And just one question on the cafe one. The parking opposite the the front door to the building, is it at a diagonal or is it, is it sort of rectilinear there? Is it?
It is diagonal.
It is like, it is as it appears in the drawing then.
Yes, it is.
So, so good news, bad news, Chris. And so the comment I've got for the board to consider is I'm a regular customer at the gas station. There's the good news. The bad news is I feel like every time I come and go, I'm taking my life in my hand as I, as I maneuver my car in and out of it. And I I'm hugely concerned about the impact of a line of traffic. And and if you look at the vehicles, a lot of the tradespeople drive, and so you're there. And, and if you look at the vehicles, a lot of the tradespeople drive, and so you're there in, in the hours, you know. The, the early hours and the noon hours when they're coming and going. I, and I'm also familiar with Route twenty in North Borough and the, the drive through Dunkin Donut shop there, and the traffic. I've observed backs up onto Route twenty, and that's a much. Bigger space for, for vehicles to drive through the, the, past the window and out again, so. So I, I, I've got a real concern. Yeah, it'd be great for you guys, for business, to have more people coming to pick up their coffee, but. Adding additional traffic to it, and then, and then when the apartments are fully occupied and we have a lot more people in the hotel, you know, as things open up. In that regard, I, I see this as a, as a. Really difficult place for vehicles coming and going. And I, I wanna make that comment really to the planning board as, as a frequent. User there, and also my observation is an awful lot of, of, well. I see, I see the out of state plates, I know we're getting the interstate sort of highway. Coming off to fuel and buy things and so on, and they're not familiar with. How the circle works, how the roundup rotary works there and the entrances and exits, so. I see people wanting to come in off River Road and exit on River Road. And Janet's comment, yes, I've, I've observed many times the truck, sometimes it's a truck that needs to. To fill the, the fuel tanks or whatever it is, you know, there's a. It, it feels to me like there's an awful lot crammed into a small parcel of land, and. I don't know that that parcel can handle the kind of vehicle traffic that I would envision through a coffee. Drive up window. I, I see it now, I, I know that. You know, in our police department, they. They said that there's, they've had the opinion, well, people are backing up out of parking spaces, they get their coffee, they go in. They park their car, they get their coffee, they come out, they back up, and that creates a snarl with the, with the people at the gas tanks. But I, I've also observed from being inside the store, because it pay with cash, I'm always, I get out of my vehicle, go walk in. That an awful lot of that foot traffic is lottery tickets and items that are on the, not the Dunkin Donuts side of the store. So. I, you know, I don't know that the pulling in and backing out in those, that set of parking spaces. Pointing into the, into the store is going to be alleviated by having a drive through, so I, I think. I think we're looking at a significant traffic issue around there. And of course, I've been there late at night to fuel up, and there's no traffic issue, but it's really, the, the times of day you would expect. I, I have less of a sense around the cafe, I've, I've certainly been there and, and. I'm a more regular customer at the gas station, less regular at the cafe, but I'm a customer there too. And again, we have a, we have a pretty tight rotary there, and. That drive, I believe, is going to, Chris, correct me if I'm wrong, it goes into the apartments, that drive. The drive that services the cafe also services the apartment parking lot, or am I confused?
No, you're not confused, Mary, that's correct. Onto the east side of River Bridge, and you can turn right into the. Cafe, or you can continue straight toward the apartment complex and enter, enter into the apartment. I, I, I will say that at site plan review, that would be a public hearing, and it would probably be. More than one session, and it would probably include. Traffic analysis from an expert, and what I understand is that. The cars that are in the queue, s- some of those cars are no longer needing parking spaces. And in a way, it's almost like adding parking spaces to the site. And so. Circulation can work better when you have a drive through, especially if it's designed well, and that would be a question. For this board in site plan review. Just if the voters allowed this, it doesn't mean. That the planning board doesn't have a say in how, how this actually gets implemented and. And whether it can be implemented and still meet all. A good, good planning, design concepts and, and applicable standards. So I think there would be a full process that would follow, but I, but I am aware of the fact that. In some respects, a drive up window can improve circulation around the, around the site.
We did such a stellar job in the first go.
Well, I, I just wanted to get my view out to the board and.
No, I appreciate that, and, and it's duly noted, because we've had conversations in the past about. The preliminary plans that have been shown, and we, we have a lot of questions.
Okay. Thank you, thank you all.
Yep.
Thank you.
There anybody else in the audience that has a question?
Eloise has her hand up.
Can you elevate Eloise, please?
Yep.
Eloise muted, oh, there you go.
Okay, I just have a quick question for Christopher. Could he send me the? Diagrams so I can put them up with the meeting for tonight and also use them for. To put on the open meeting for the town meeting, so people, when they're looking over stuff, they will have everything before them. Properly identified.
Yes, cer- certainly, Eloise.
Thank you, that's it.
Thank you, Eloise.
Thank you, bye.
Any other? Member of the general public?
Not that I see.
Okay. Board's good. Looks like the board's good. Okay, then we shall move on. To number eight, to see if the town will vote to amend the town of Berlin zoning bylaw as follows. Replace sections four fifty five point two and four fifty five point three with the following new section. Four fifty five point two, in order to ensure a mixed use, mixed of uses within a mixed. Use village, no more than twenty five percent of the total floor area. Of all uses within the mixed use village shall be commercial space. Amend the table in section five, four, five, six point three by. I, a small I, changing the residential subsection heading to residential dash apartment dwellings. Comma, C C R C Independent Living Units, comma, Assisted Living Units. And by adding the word apartment before the, each word dwelling within this subsection. Double I, small double I, adding the new subsection entitled Town Homes and inserting. Maximum number of town homes, thirty, see note number five. Adding the new note five as follows. If approved by the planning board during V O, site plan approval up to thirty thousand. Square feet of commercial space may be substituted with town homes at a rate of one thousand. Square feet of commercial space per town home. Adding the new column for town homes under the section entitled Building Height. And adding within this column, maximum building height, thirty two feet. Maximum building height, if fully sprinkled, thirty two feet. See, adding the new section four, five, eight point five as follows. At least ten percent of the town homes shall qualify for inclusion in the town's S H I. These units shall be affordable as moderate income as defined in section, such section. Seven, three, zero. D, adding the following new definition to Article fourteen, dwelling, apartment. Any dwelling within a building containing more than two units. Where the dwelling units are connected by an interior corridor. E, by adding the following new definition to Article fourteen, town home. A dwelling that has two levels and which is attached to a similar dwelling by a shared wall. And lastly, eh, or take any such, eh, other, any such other action thereupon. So that is the text of. Item number eight. Does any member of the board have a question or comment? About this section? Okay. Seeing none. Does any member of the audience have their hand raised that would like to make a question or a comment? Or have a question or a comment?
Ron?
Yeah. I think this is more than what the town signed up for. When, when we approved the mixed use village, this is giving us more residential units than, than we were, we wanted to have. I didn't look up all the details of this like you just read, Tom.
Alright.
But, uh, I, I don't, this is just not what the town signed up for. This is getting less the mixed use village than a residential village.
Okay. Other comments?
Chris Sunny has his hand up.
Okay, one second, Chris. Uh, any other comments from anybody else? No, okay, can we elevate Chris, please?
Uh, he's still elevated.
He's still elevated, okay, Chris.
Thank you very much. Again, I'm with River Bridge and I drafted this article and. My brother and I circulated this and got signatures. Uh, this does call for adding a new type of housing to River Bridge. Along the parcel that we call Lot nine B, which runs along River Road West from the cafe to the daycare center. Uh, this is actually not more bedrooms than we got approved in two thousand nine, or twenty six fewer. Bedrooms than was originally approved if this warrant article passed and the planning board. Were to approve converting up to thirty thousand square feet of commercial to. Up to thirty townhomes. Uh, we do have this property under contract with Black Brook Realty Corp. Uh, you, this board has met John Burns, the principal of that company, and in our purchase and sale agreement. It's really up to the contract purchaser to present this, so if the board is agreeable. I believe John is here and also the landscape architect that he works with at W D. A Design Group, Carolyn Burke. And she would like to take the board through just a small set of slides so the public can appreciate. What would be placed on Lot nine B if the voters approved this, so if the chair allows. They are here and, and would be happy to present.
Okay, one second, is there any other questions or comments from the public or the board? Carolyn, is there anybody that raises, that has raised their hand? No?
Oh, Mary, oh, Mary did and then took it down. She has her hand back up.
Sorry, sorry, Carolyn, Mary Porter again. Yeah, I, I, my hand, my finger was too quick there on the little, on the little. I, I, I think, I think Ron made the comment earlier about this is not what we signed up for, but. I, I have a little different view, which I've expressed to Chris on this, which is I, I, I think. I think the town of Berlin. Does not need more, more. Does not need these condominiums, what we really need is a food establishment and a slow food establishment. In the nature of a food market. And the present zoning of commercial, I think, would, would in the long run. Be better financially for the town and better for the residents. I think that the. Each residential dwelling that we add to the town, I think adds to. The town costs that the current taxpayers presently have to shoulder. And, and so I'm, you know, I think it is much better for us to be, to remain with the existing zoning on this particular parcel. And that's. Just wanted to put that view out there, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there any other comment, or anybody else have their hand raised for a comment?
I see no other hands.
No other hands. Um, I would like to see, I have Chris. Present what. The landscape architect has. If you.
Okay, so.
Need to elevate that person and then allow them to share the screen.
Right, so I've got W D A, so that's Carolyn Burke, right?
Right.
So we're gonna promote her. John Burns, and then who was the third?
No, it's just the two of them.
Oh, I thought you said there was a landscape architect as well.
I think that's through W D A, uh, W W D A.
Yes.
Yes, hi, I'm Carolyn Burke.
Hi Carolyn, how are you?
Very well, how are you, Tom?
Good, thank you.
Yes, I am a landscape architect. I work for W D A Design Group Incorporated, and we are civil engineers, landscape architects. Planners. And surveyors, and I. Thank you for this opportunity to speak with you tonight. To share our concept for a proposed town home community at this. Site on River Road West. I'm going to share my screen. Alright, do you see my screen?
Yes, I do.
Okay, thank you. So we are here to discuss a three point seven two acre vacant lot. Uh, within the Berlin Village overlay district. And I just wanted to create a summary to start with in our introduction. That the V O district is created for the purpose of permitting. The development of a mixed use village that integrates residential, retail service and public use components. Balances conservation and development goals, protects and enhances the character of the natural and cultural resources of Berlin. While promoting appropriately planned use of land in accordance with the village development plan. As I read in the town of Berlin Housing Goals from two thousand eighteen. There's the goal to increase the number of smaller units for smaller houses, smaller households. Create housing that fits with the character of the community, contribute to the municipal capacity to create and manage affordable housing. Promote a unique sense of community and place. Preserve valuable natural and cultural resources, specifically a rural character. Partner with private developers to further smart growth and infill. Identify development opportunity to help diversify the local housing development. And how the town can leverage local investments. The site we are talking about is. Surrounded by the Rockwell at River Bridge apartment community. The River Road West, the Rotary, the Cafe as we've discussed. Uh, the daycare. Commercial across the street, including the gas station as we've discussed. And commercial parking for the hotel and a hotel. Also want to point out that there is. The River Road West Conservation Area. And the Northbrook along. Along the property, along the Rockwell River Bridge property. Our plan that we have at a conceptual level. Our plan that we have at a conceptual level would be to put twenty-eight two-story town home units. The units would be located, we go back in this zone where we presently have the Bassett Road. And over here, the Bassett Road. Do some road extension. So we're talking about infill of this now abandoned area. The proposal is for there to be a significant buffer between River Road West and the houses. The houses are approx, excuse me. The houses are approximately fifty feet from the street and forty feet from the property line. The site plan provides for one, units that are two-bedroom, one thousand fifty square feet and an interior garage. There is walkway between the Rockwell at River Bridge along the Bassett Road and connecting both to the daycare and to the cafe. There is proposed ten car parking specifically for the cafe. And there is the daycare existing parking that will remain. The elevation for the proposed townhomes consists of shingle siding, stone wall. The elevations are for thirty feet maximum. And the typical units have the garage, sorry. The garage entry, the entry porch, bathroom, stairwell, kitchen, and main living area on the first floor. In two thousand eighteen, a commercial site plan was prepared for this property. And by contrast, there are four, I'm sorry, five, single-story block-style commercial buildings. The central core of this layout is parking. And the buildings sit. The buildings are sitting approximately twelve feet from the street. I'm trying to enlarge this as I've got the mark shown. There is a significant reduction in the amount of green space. And the interior circulation of the sidewalks is primarily for the buildings and can, connects the River Road West with the existing bus stop. So in summary, just wanted to give some numbers. You can see the difference between the approved commercial site plan and the town home plan. For the commercial site, the total impervious area is about seventy-three percent of the site or two point seven acres compared to fifty-five percent of the site with a proposed town home concept. There is proposed forty-five percent of green space or one point seven acres of green space for the town home site plan versus the twenty-seven percent or one acre of the commercial site. The commercial site plan shows over an acre of first-floor building. And by comparison, twenty-nine thousand square feet for the townhomes. The parking area for commercial site plan is a hundred thirteen exterior spaces versus seventy total spaces. In summary, the there would be significantly more traffic for a commercial site than are would be for the town home site. The Institute of Tem, of Transportation Engineers estimates that a high-turn turnover sit-down restaurant with an average vehicle occupancy of one and a half people would average one hundred thirty vehicle trips per hour versus one thousand feet of gross floor area on a weekday. If the building were intentionally general office where the average percent of gross reasonable, reasonable area is eighty-eight percent occupied. The Institute of Transportation Engineers estimates three point three-two average vehicle trips for employee on a weekday. By comparison, the residential condominium or town home community would estimate five point eight-six average vehicle trips per dwelling on a weekday. I do want to add one more item, uh, that in this concept for the proposed townhomes. We are proposing to expand the bus stop at River Road West in order to allow the bus to fully pull off the road or the main, um, lane of traffic. And to increase the area for people to use, to have access onto, uh, to the bus. Uh, in conclusion, our concept for the River Bridge Town Homes community is consistent with and promotes the Town of Berlin Master Plan, the Town of Berlin Open Space and Recreation Plan from two thousand eleven through two thousand eighteen. This is, site is ideally located and in the condition for a town home community within the River Bridge Village Overlake District. As we have seen, that it's surrounded by conservation area. That it is a transition between the apartment buildings and landscape at the street. And that it is in association, uh, with the surrounding commercial buildings. The town home community is at a New England village scale. And will provide this transition. The significant reduction, as we've seen in the impervious surface, stormwater runoff as well as, uh, volume of traffic, um, can be seen between the town home site plan and the commercial site plan. And finally, there's an increase of green space, walkability, and neighborhood character of the town home community. This will contribute to preserving the rural character and open space found in Berlin. Thank you.
Can I ask a question?
Please.
If you have two bedrooms, where does the second car go?
Well, if there are two cars.
Well, there would be, you know that.
We have one car parked in the garage and one car parked in the driveway.
Where's the garage and where's the driveway? Are they one behind the other?
Correct.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Are there further questions?
Uh, two, three, three hands. Do, uh, we have Janet Lamy, we have, um, Peg Stone Select Board Member, and we have Mary Porter.
Okay, can we, um, let's hear in the order that you just read them out, please.
Okay. Janet, you're up.
Hi, I just wanna see the next, um, the next slide that shows the, uh, breakout of what was proposed and what is being proposed. Uh, I guess about, I know, this one. So my question is, when you first proposed this commercial site plan, um, back in eighteen, are those, are, and then you're proposing the house plans for the site. Are you including numbers in the apartment buildings along with this?
This number is specifically for lot nine B, which is three point seven acres of this site. This is not the apartment building.
Okay, so this, this, these is equal comparison for, for lots is what I was trying to figure out.
So there are, and Chris would have a specific number, believe that there are, um, the apartments can hold two hundred seventy-eight, or they had two hundred seventy-eight units. And here we're talking about twenty-eight townhomes.
But the point was that you're comparing apples to apples. In other words, you're comparing that lot nine B to the commercial proposal and then substituting it with a town home proposal, but it's only to that nine B site, right?
Okay, thank you.
Any comments to the comment that was just made? No? Can we hear the next person that had raised their hand?
Yep, next person is Peg Stone. There we go.
There you go, I just unmuted. Thanks, Carolyn. Uh, this message is for Chris. So with all the plans that you're showing, Chris, could you please, uh, talk to us and show us where the pedestrian and bike bridges are going and the sidewalks will be going that were part of the original agreement?
So I can say that we've got the sidewalks along River Road West. We have sidewalk expanded bus stop at this location to the property line. And then we've got the corridor of sidewalk into the site to the Rockwell River Bridge Apartments. Sidewalk to the daycare. There is sidewalk that exists along Newsome Road down into the Village Apartments. There is sidewalk here that goes to the parking area at the cafe.
Um, actually, pardon me for interrupting, but I wasn't really so much talking about sidewalks with the proposed townhomes, but the sidewalks going more sort down the road towards the community garden, which I understand there is quite a few, uh, people from the apartments that are joining. And, um, also sidewalks leading to the malls. So not looking here, that's why the question was more so directed at Chris and not, uh, specifically the townhomes.
Is it okay if I respond?
Yes, please.
Uh, thank you, Peg. I don't have in front of me this evening and can't pull up on my screen our entire site plan. But I think what you're referring to is the, the open space areas at River Bridge and the connection down toward the community garden, uh, and, and to the intersection with Donald Lynch Boulevard.
Correct.
We, we have put eighty-six acres into a conservation restriction. And that's open to members of the public and, and the people who reside at River Bridge and patronize the businesses here. Uh, that includes a seven-acre parcel we leased to the town for a dollar a year for ninety-nine years, which is, which has the community garden on them. The overall village plan called for us to build the, the parking lot at the group, at the community garden and the roadway end, which we did. We've also built a trail down to the, uh, Assabet River over near the town's metal lot, which is to the north of, of what you're looking at here. There is a, um, a part of the overall village development plan, which calls for extending the sidewalk from the cafe building down River Road West toward the community garden over Northbrook. And then all the way to Donald Lynch Boulevard. That, th- those improvements are still contained within our development agreement. We are holding discussions with a subcommittee of the town about the remaining obligations we have as the developer to the town for certain off-site improvement. And, um, so those are, are ongoing discussions. And we, we welcome anyone's involvement or participation in talking about uh, the pedestrian bridge over Northbrook and the, the sidewalk, uh, continuing down to the end of the street. The reason we haven't built the pedestrian bridge is that we've been in discussions about the idea that the bridge is going to have to be replaced sometime in the future. And it may make more sense for us to contribute to a bridge, uh, feasibility and design study rather than build a pedestrian bridge that would, would likely wind up being replaced in the future by, by a more modern bridge that would have, uh, pedestrian bridge incorporated right into it. So we can have a discussion, uh, as part of that subcommittee set of meetings. Or, uh, we plan to hold a public forum before the town meeting to go over all of the River Bridge warrant articles. And during that forum, I will have a map of the entire site, which shows the open space and all of these improvements. And we would welcome any questions about our fulfillment of the obligations we have in the development agreement.
So, uh, I appreciate that, Chris. So basically, you're telling me that you're still in discussion. You have no plans, you have no dates to make, um, a promise to the town for bridges and walkways to be complete. Is that correct?
Well, in the development agreement, we had obligated ourselves to expand the bridge over Northbrook by, uh, two feet on either side and building a pedestrian bridge. Those obligations, uh, have not yet been triggered under our development agreement. The deadline for those is approaching, but we're not late in delivering those. And rather than develop those plans and prepare to, to deliver those, we have entered into, uh, discussions with the town about what is the best way to handle that obligation.
So can you, um, the woman who was speaking before, uh, terribly sorry, and this will be my last question to give Mary, uh, time. Uh, the bus stop that you keep mentioning, can you talk a little bit about that? I mean, I've lived in town forever and honestly, I see the police sitting more in that area by the Dunkin' Donuts for, uh, traffic concerns than I have ever seen a bus come through Berlin. So, um, could you tell me what bus line that is, where it's coming from, where it's going to? What are the routes? How to get on it? Are you talking school bus?
Did, I'll take that question, Peg. Th- this is for the school bus. We, we have in the currently approved site plan for lot nine B a turnout for the bus, and actually it was built already. The problem is that some members of the community have approached us and asked that that be a further indent into lot nine B, uh, and, and get that school bus turnout further off the road. And at first, we thought we might need to grant the town a wider road right-of-way to accomplish that because school buses cannot go on private property. But, uh, WDA looked at that and they concluded that we can expand that turnout area quite a bit and still be within the town's road right-of-way. And whether there are townhomes on lot nine B or commercial at some point in the future, that turnout is going to be widened. And the school bus area will be a, a bit further removed from the, from the traffic. But there is no regional transit bus that's being planned. There's no anticipation for any other kind of bus. This is, this is, uh, a discussion we've been having with the town about school buses.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
And I believe that leaves Mary Porter. There you go, Mary.
Uh, thank you Carolyn. Um, I, just to, uh, to add to what Peg just, just said about, um, pedestrian ways, sidewalks, bike, bike paths, that sort of thing. I, I think as we look at the residential population moving into the apartments and as we look at the guests coming into, uh, the hotel, we're now, these, these, uh, these bits of the plan, it's a matter of public safety to have a place for people to, to, um, pedestrians to use as we have, you know, more residents there and the townhouses only make it more urgent. And so I, I just want to emphasize Peg's point about, this is something that needs to happen irrespective of other negotiations. For public safety reasons. So, uh, and back to, back to Carolyn and the schematics and the units proposed for the townhouses. Uh, just so I understand, I, um, the, the garages are one car garage, yeah?
Yes.
Are, are there, are there any units with a bedroom on the first floor?
No.
So, is there any other handicap access provision in these units? I mean, uh...
Well, this is at a conceptual level.
Okay.
For the zoning article.
Right, so, so part of, uh, the, the concept that, that I think the planning board has to consider is the question of parking. And, uh, a little bit resonating with my earlier comment about the gas station about putting an awful lot into a fairly small parcel. I, I, I see a car parking issue with these townhouses and I see people in townhouses using daycare parking and using cafe parking because there won't be, uh, there's no, um, there's no give in it. There's no, there's no overflow provision here. It's all very, very tight and, uh, the realities of people living in these kinds of units, it's typically going to be, um, well, the, I, I can use the, the expert's estimate of one point eight seven cars per unit, that sort of thing. So I, uh, again, I see it as an area that's very congested with vehicles and having insufficient parking the way it is. And not allowing the addition of handicap units down the road if there's, you know, a need for them.
Could I respond on the, on the question about the parking spaces?
Yes, please.
At the apartments, Mary, there are two spaces per apartment. Uh, that was a requirement of the, uh, the developer that bought that parcel from us. Uh, there, there is very adequate parking within the, within the apartment complex to, to handle that community. The, the daycare center parking lot, uh, the apartments are not allowed to park in that parking lot. They have no right to do that and I'm not aware that they do that or have any reason to do that. Eventually, uh, the, the parking lot of the daycare center does share parking with uh, either the townhomes or the commercial development on lot nine B. Uh, but that was always envisioned in our development, uh, documents and, and our tenant uh, at the daycare center understands that after the daycare center closes in the evening, the users on lot nine B can park there. The, the other question I'd like to respond to is the public safety and the sidewalks. I do recognize that we have not yet finalized the plan for the sidewalks leading down to the community garden and over Northbrook, but everywhere else on our site, it is very safe and, and the crosswalks that we have now connecting the east and west sides of the site were designed by a, an engineer and, and those improvements were put in with a Massworks grant that, that we succeeded in bringing to the town and the town actually built with those state funds, uh, River Road West in the configuration you see now with the, the turning lanes that didn't exist there before. All of the, the ways in which people who are here at the hotel or the apartments or the commercial establishments move around the site itself. I mean, the twenty-six acres at the, at the center of River Bridge is very safe and fully approved by the town's highway department and by the state. So this is a very safe community that's been designed for pedestrian traffic. The, the area where it is not yet complete, and this is because for over a year we've been holding discussions with the town, is the sidewalk down toward the community garden and Donald Lynch Boulevard. Also, in terms of people in the hotel or the apartments having places to walk already constructed, there is a tremendous number of walking trails, uh, around the property in that conservation area. All of it very safe and, and according to the plan we agreed to. So I do agree that we, we haven't yet buttoned up the, the, the rest of the off-site improvement, but in terms of the way this mixed use functions right in the, the center here, it's all been done according to, to very good design and, and a lot of care to make sure that this is safe.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, please.
Last time I asked about this Basset Road that comes out where I see people making illegal left-hand turn across traffic all the time, on top of the people coming out of the Dunkin' Donuts gas station area. That really needs to be moved down so that they cannot make that left-hand turn.
I'll be happy to respond if that's okay.
Yes, please.
Uh, I think whenever something is developed on lot nine B, looking at the way Basset Road, that section of Basset Road ties into River Road West can, can be done and we can take a look at that curb cut. That curb cut was approved by your board and in site plan review. We all felt that this was the right way to design that so that the two, um, driveways are across from one another, the driveway on the east side leading toward the apartments and the driveway in the, on the west side leading toward the gas station and the hotel. But certainly while, when lot nine B is finally developed and, and we've been trying for more than a decade to find markets and commercial users, um, and if we fail at the townhomes, we'll continue to try. At some point, lot nine B will be developed and I think absolutely together with this board, we, we will look at any improvements that, that should be considered while we, while we bring about a development plan for this last parcel.
Tom?
Yes ma'am.
If I could just, uh, I, we've, uh, this is our second time I believe seeing these plans. Um, but just for the public hearing record, I would like to, um, just mention my concern about the density of this project.
Okay.
Thirty homes on less than four acres. We wouldn't allow two single-family homes on that size lot anywhere else in town. And I feel that the density is inappropriate for Berlin.
Per...
Yeah, yeah. Okay.
We do have a video prepared, which has previously been shared. We can show that. It gives you a walkthrough.
Yeah, that's not really going to change my mind.
But because the public hasn't seen it.
Yeah, that's true. Um, and just so you know, Eloise just, Eloise has her hand up, um, as well, but you... Let me know what you want to do.
Um, I thi- how long's the video?
There are two videos. They're each about a minute and a half.
Please show them. I think that'll be helpful and it'll, it'll put it into record too. And then I'll take Eloise's question afterwards.
Okay, just one moment please. Perhaps you take the question while I pull up the video. I'm having trouble exiting this screen.
Okay.
If that's okay.
Can we take Eloise's question then, please?
You got it.
Hello?
Hi Eloise, go ahead.
I believe this has a forty B component, in which case it's exempt from zoning.
Say that last part again.
Forty Bs are exempt from zoning.
Providing we don't have a cap, right?
Uh, I don't think it's a limit. I would strongly advise you to check with council. And if they're, if they're working with a protected group, even though we are currently over ten percent, I believe they will get permission anyway. That's the nature of forty B.
Can I respond to that, Tom?
Yes, please.
We are here because we're attempting to rezone. We, we are not here to advance a, a forty B project. Uh, when a town is below ten percent of their housing stock qualifying, qualifying as subsidized housing inventory, a developer can come in and file what's called a comprehensive permit, not with your board, but with the zoning board of appeals. And in that case, they can circumvent zoning. We have never tried to circumvent zoning in Berlin. We, we zoned in the apartments because it was a way to get the town out of any further forty B danger throughout the town. And in no way are we attempting to, to circumvent zoning. This is an article that's asking the voters if they would like to, through, through a change in the zoning bylaws, allow a different type of housing at, at River Bridges. These would be for sale units, small for sale units that would be purchased. And it is true that three of those units would be, or ten percent would be sold at rates that are affordable to someone making air, eighty percent of very median income. Um, but, but no, this is a zoning proposal and I can tell you that the Sunnys and River Bridge are not involved in any, uh, forty B that's attempting to make the town do this. I, I think there may be some confusion there. There was a law passed in twenty twenty that changes the, the percentage of the vote that must be in favor at a town meeting when a, a project involves multi-family housing. And, and that drops the vote requirement from a two-thirds vote to a simple majority. The town has written to us and raised a question about whether we qualify for that and I have in turn written to the Department of Housing and Community Development to clarify that question. So at this point, I don't know that it's known whether this, this set of warrant articles will require a two-thirds or a simple majority. But in either case, what we are presenting to you is cooperative zoning that either gets approved by the town meeting or doesn't.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, so Margaret has her hand up and, um, Mary Porter, is your hand still up or up again?
Um, I, I, I think I'm gonna pass on the question I had Carolyn, thank you.
Okay.
I am having trouble with that little icon.
All right, I'll lower it for you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So just Margaret.
Margaret.
Okay, um, thank you. I just want to, I just want to, um, inform everyone that town council has advised um, that because this article does contain provisions that, uh, don't qualify for the majority vote under the new housing act, that this would require a two-thirds vote along with all the other zoning bylaw amendments that are going to be presented at town meeting. Thank you.
Okay, there's our answer, perfect.
I, I would just like to respond. I know Margaret that, that you sent word that the town attorney has opined that this requires a, a two-thirds vote and it might, but the change that you referred to in your communication was the one about changing the square footage. The first part that Tom read under number eight, uh, that in order to ensure a mix of uses within a mixed-use village, no less than twenty-five percent of the total floor area of all uses within the mixed-use village shall be commercial space. However, that's not independent of the effort to bring this housing into town and get approval. Um, in fact, the current bylaw requires thirty-five percent commercial. And so we would not be able to build these townhomes unless we not only had the voters approved everything below that, which relates to the townhome, but you would have to change that mix in order to do it too. And I, I, I'm in discussions with the Department of Housing and Community Development. There is an answer here. Uh, certainly town council can become, uh, involved in that and whatever the moderator and town council determine in the final analysis is, is, is what will be required at town meeting. But it's, I think that this is a, a question that we just don't know the answer to yet.
Okay, are the videos ready? You're muted. I can't hear you.
Yes.
Okay. Can we, um, see the videos please? Cool.
White neighborhood.
So a couple of comments, Chris, if you're gonna use this in a public forum other than this public forum, you gotta signalize the intersection. So just be careful on that. And then you have copious amounts of fire hydrants throughout the project, so I'm sure there's gonna be people counting fire hydrants. So a couple of things to note that, you know, this might be for illustrative purposes or a, you know, a conceptual idea or something like that because there'll be people that'll want that if they see it.
Thank you, Tom.
Any other comments from anybody?
I know that there's plenty of water in the wells across the street to support this, or at least I believe there is. How is, what's gonna happen with the sewer systems for these buildings?
All of the public water supply and sewage treatment infrastructure is in place for, for this development. When we designed River Bridge, we got permission from the state to take 66,000 gallons of water out of our four wells every day, use it and treat it and put it back in, in the same watershed. And DEP requires that we set aside a very conservative quantity of daily use for each user. For example, the hotel has 105 rooms and we must set aside and not let anyone else use 110 gallons a day per room. So the hotel has reserved to it 11,550 gallons a day. And so we are well within the, the total usage allowances under our public water supply permit and our groundwater discharge permit with DEP.
Any additional questions from the board members? Any additional questions from the audience with hands raised?
Mary Porter?
Please.
Yeah, Carolyn, I, there is one question that I, that I did want to ask, which is what's the ownership gonna look like on this parcel B as it's developed and obligations currently owned to the town by, owed to the town by River Bridge? How are they gonna flow if there is a change in ownership? I'm assuming that's the way this is envisioned and I'd just like a little more information about that.
Chris?
Sure, the, the obligations that River Bridge North LLC, our development company has to the town are particular to, to our development entity, but everyone who has purchased property at River Bridge, purchased property subject to a recorded declaration of covenants, conditions and restrictions, which sets out all of the, the ground rules for how our village operates. And so, for example, we charge common charges to maintain all of the common areas at, at River Bridge. And, and we have an owners association called the River Bridge Association, Inc. And so Lot 9B, if it were sold to Black Brook Realty Corp., would be sold subject to the declaration of covenants, conditions and restrictions and would be required to pay a 14% share of the common charges, just like the hotel has to pay a particular share and the apartments have to pay a share. And Matt and I on the gas station, daycare center and cafe have, have to pay a share. But the development obligations are particular to Matt and me and our company and our family. These are obligations the developer entered into with the town. That development agreement is recorded on the land records too, so all buyers know about it. But those, those obligations are on us, the developer, and then every property owner at River Bridge is obligated to participate in the, in the community association.
Yep, thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
Any additional comments or questions? Any members of the board wanna make any comments or questions?
Ron just raised his hand.
Okay.
Yes, as I said, as I started out, this is not what the, the town signed up for. It's not what people wanted, I don't think. Now, we put up the apartments taking the place of the continuing care retirement community. But a lot of people, when they saw those apartments, they say, what are those? Why did you let them do that? And it's, we were trying to make up for the affordable housing, so we made, made our Even though we did that and we had, we had a purpose for it, I heard people didn't like it and I didn't have to go too far to hear that people didn't like it. I didn't have to leave the house to hear that people didn't like it. So, so here we are, we're, we're doing something else, this doing it in spades to get it, get more so, so I just look the board and know that.
Okay, thank you. Any additional penetrating insights from anybody?
Yeah, I'd just like to suggest something that we all need to think about responding to what you just said, Ron, that, that we are where we are and, you know, there were reasons for it. But now you've got a property that has several acres of dirt and ugly buildings and there's been no progress for a long time. And I guess you, you can have your own opinion about it, how hard Matt and Chris have tried to get buyers for the things that were originally envisioned and it seems like they've put a fair amount of effort in that over a fairly long period of time and have not been able to come up with what was originally envisioned in the plan. So put that behind you and then the question is, what do you want to do with that open space right now? Right? So of the choices that are available, which so far look to be townhomes or question mark, which do you prefer and how soon do you want the project to be finished and looking finished? And, you know, get, as we, as we said, the issues with the, the walkways and pedestrian walkways and the bike walkways and the bridge and all those things put to bed because it's not, you know, the, those are all, all become due.
At this point, if we don't have any more questions, comments or penetrating insights, I will take a motion to close this hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on this motion? Nope, seeing none, I will ask you to vote to close the hearing. Janet Campbell?
Aye.
Carolyn McDonald?
Aye.
Timothy Wheeler?
Aye.
Jay Teach? Tom Sanford?
Aye.
Jay was on mute, but I read his lips.
Sorry about that.
Okay, thank you all.
Thank you very much, everyone.
That closes this hearing. Thank you. Thank you. Alrighty, um, that's about all I had on the agenda unless somebody has anything else they want to throw on for our consideration.
I am good.
You're good, okay. Steps is we'll have to capitulate and talk about this and then vote on these before we get to a town meeting and I have to have a report on each one for town meeting. So we will do that in the next couple of sessions or we can chat about it or whatever we want to do. We just have to do this before town meeting. Hey, take the vote before town meeting. Next meeting, we have the hearing on the definitive subdivision, right? I believe the notice is in the paper or will be in the paper?
Yes, it, it's, the telegram has verified the fact it'll be in the item this Friday and next.
Perfect, okay.
I guess it was in, it was in last Friday and it'll be in next Friday.
Right.
Yeah.
Should be.
Yeah, and we got the proofs on that, so we're all set.
We should be all set, should be a fairly straightforward hearing. I don't think there's anything that's outlandish.
No, I mean, I, I think Scott got them to address what needed to be, you know, dealt with, so no, it worked out fine.
Right.
Looks, looks easy.
Yep, so we should be good in that. So that's previews of things to come. So if anybody doesn't have, if everybody's good and doesn't have anything else they want to add or comment on, I will take a motion.
I move we adjourn.
He's falling asleep.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to adjourn any other discussion. Seeing none, hearing none, I will call you to vote. Jay Teach?
Aye.
Timothy Wheeler?
Aye.
Carolyn McDonald?
Aye.
Janet Campbell?
Aye.
And Tom Sanford?
Aye.